To July's meeting of the County Council Executive. We start then with any apologies for absence, please.
Thank you, Leader. We haven't received any apologies.
That's very good. Thank you. Any declarations of councillor interest, please? Item two. I'm not seeing any indicated, so I'll take it as there are none. Item three then, announcements by member leader or executive councillors or executive directors. Are there any from the floor? No, we did attend, some of us did attend the LJ Conference last week. There wasn't a lot of announcements, but the Secretary of State for Local Government did announce that he is intending to have a two-year settlement, which I presume will be after this year, which will, that was announced. And there was a commitment to reduce the number of funding streams which currently councils have to bid for, which apparently is in excess, currently in excess 100. So there was a commitment there. So those were the two announcements there. We had Secretary of State for Children's, again, just updating us on the reforms which are happening and announcing various changes to the SEND programme, but also changes to the academyisation and commitment, confirmation that all schools will be expected to be a part of an academy by 2030? 2030. 2030. But it was, it was one of the better ones. I don't know whether the chief execs have got anything else out. We also got quite a lot of informal information and feedback from colleagues elsewhere. And I suppose there was also some useful progress on the devolution agenda with our district council colleagues and colleagues from North, North Lincolnshire, where we are carrying on the confirmation of our bid when it's appropriate for government. I don't know whether the chief execs got anything to add.
Thank you. I think confirmation about the two-year budget settlement was a very helpful discussion. We also understand that they're due to set up the Office for Local Government, which will increase the amount of accountability on councils to be able to demonstrate value for money to the general public. So we wait to hear more about that. And there was a lot of discussions as well at a chief executive level about inflation and the management of inflation and some of the potential challenges around a potential industrial dispute over, over pay, which is obviously we're seeing in other sectors at the moment. But a very useful conference over the couple of days.
Thank you. Any further comments? I'll move on then to item four, which is the minutes of the meeting held of this executive, held on the 7th of June. Is your wish I assign those as true and accurate record, councillors? Is that agreed? Thank you. Very good. I'll then move on to first substantive item, which is item five, which is for the county councillors to establish, jointly establish an integrated care partnership with the Integrated Care Board. So I don't know who's lead starting with this, councillor Woolley?
Thank you, Leader. You will see from the front page that the integrated care part, integrated care system came into being on, in, in April and then became law on the 1st of July this year with the first meeting of the, in Lincolnshire's case, the Integrated Care Board. The Integrated Care Partnership will be responsible for creating the strategy for health and care in Lincolnshire. And I'm going to now ask Michelle Andrews if she will explain to you in further detail exactly what that entails.
Okay, thank you. So the purpose of this report is to provide details of the approach Lincolnshire will take regarding the requirement for Lincolnshire County Council to jointly establish an integrated care partnership with the Lincolnshire NHS Integrated Care Board. This is part of the new landscape within the integrated care system, and our system is to be known locally as Better Lives Lincolnshire. Health and Care Bill received royal assent on the 28th of April and requires each area in England to establish an integrated care system known as an ICS. Health and Care Act comes into law, as said, on the 1st of July, and our Integrated Care Board has had its first meeting. The purpose of this report is to set out the rationale for the way that Lincolnshire will undertake our approach to the Integrated Care Partnership. We want to approach this and formally request that we establish, the county councillor establishes the Integrated Care Partnership as a joint committee with Lincolnshire NHS Integrated Care Board in accordance with section 116ZA of the local government and public involvement in the Health Act 2007. So the appointment of the chair and, sorry, the appointment of councillor Woolley and executive councillor, NHS liaison, community engagement and registration coroners as Lincolnshire County Council's representative on the joint committee. So the reasons for this recommendation, as I said, is to establish the ICP as part of these new arrangements. And within Lincolnshire, as we are a co-terminus with our Integrated Care Board and our ICS boundaries regarding geographical boundaries and our top-tier authority, we want to align and have as much integration as possible between these two functions. So what we are proposing with regard to setting up our Integrated Care Partnership as a joint committee is to then align this as much as possible with the roles and responsibilities of our health and, sorry, health and care committee. And we intend to do this as part of those arrangements. Our Health and Wellbeing Board meets four times a year, and we have a wide range of partners within that board. And we want the ICP to align to those responsibilities. And where possible, intend to have a strategy that incorporates all of the intentions of our Health and Wellbeing Board and all of the intentions of our Integrated Care Partnership to bring that into one place. The upper-tier authorities of the ICBs and the NHS England must have regard to the Integrated Care Strategy. And we want our ambitions with our Integrated Care Board and our local system to be accountable in this way. We're approaching the group to take recommendation forward, and I'm happy to answer any questions on the ability for us to take this forward in this way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. So there are comments from overview and scrutiny, councillor Parker?
Thank you, yes. Overview and scrutiny board met and we considered the paper. We supported the aims. The key aim essentially is about closer working. I think one of the points that does need stressing is that out of the closer working, we should see better outcomes. And it will be important for us to monitor those better outcomes at some, some stage in the, in the scrutiny process, whether it's with health and wellbeing or whether it's through overview and scrutiny management board.
Thank you for that, thank you for those comments. Questions, comments, please? I suppose the question I've got is, what difference will it make? And what are the, what are we hoping will be better under the new system?
I think in very simple terms, Leader, it will mean that our residents will have a greater understanding of exactly what their health and care entails and indeed what the offer is as well. I think at the moment, there can be silos as far as working is concerned. And sometimes the left hand doesn't always know what the right hand's doing. So I'm extremely hopeful that as this embeds itself throughout the country, that we all have a greater understanding around the simplification, if that makes sense to you, that exactly what our offer is and what we can gain from both the NHS and indeed our social care offer.
Thank you very much, councillor Woolley. Just to add to that as well, is that the health system through these legislative changes are required to work much more collaboratively together. So we know that we've got a mental health trust, we've got a community trust, we've got a collection of GPs, and we've got an acute trust. And historically, the action of one often has an unintended consequence on the, on the other organisations, be that good or bad. So for example, if the health service or if the acute trusts get less admissions, they get less money, but surely that's better that people are treated at in the community. So the changes require the providers to work much more collaboratively and take risks and gains so that the people who invest the money also see the rewards, even if they don't necessarily at an organisation level. So the changes hopefully to get the health system to work closer together and recognise that they have unintended consequences on one another should see the right decisions been made in the best interest of our communities.
Anybody want to add anything more on that? I mean, I suppose just on the overview and scrutiny comments, there was the issue about provider trusts, in particular the acute trusts, and so how that will fit into, what difference that will make to how we work together. And as Debbie said, in terms of how collaboration works better. And we did have a meeting with North, North East Lincolnshire on Friday, and the new arrangements where we have Derek Ward, our Public Health Director, is now working with them. And there was a strong commitment, no decision yet, but they were very happy with the arrangements. Probably they are being spoilt a bit by Derek at the moment. So I think there'll be an issue of, you know, Derek has done a lot of work making sure that they get embedded properly. But obviously, we, it needs to be a sort of a more balanced approach, shall we say. And there was, seemed to be a commitment that probably a restructure in terms of the whole of Greater Lincolnshire under one public health directorate could actually then, we could restructure it. So each part of the whole of Greater Lincolnshire does get dedicated support. But at the same time, you get the resilience and the strategic direction from one place. So obviously, if that works for public health, I suppose the question then is, following these reforms, is there any other opportunities then, eventually, I'm not saying it's going to happen, that you could actually extend that collaboration to other, to some of these other trusts as well, to make it better and a more, more smooth service for our residents. Councillor Woolley?
Absolutely, Leader. Completely agree with you. I think the point that I wanted to make was, or wanted to give you an answer around the provider organisations. It, it fits in, the NHS provider organisations. In this instance, the Integrated Care Partnership will set the strategy, and it is the Integrated Care Board, which is made up amongst other things of the NHS providers, that must have regard to that, that strategy so that they then set the, the services that they, they offer to residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm quite excited by it, actually. I mean, sitting on, on the board on Friday alongside Sue. I mean, everybody really is eager to make a difference, and I think that's, that is the difference. You've got a large number of people round the table, but they all want to make a difference. And they understand that we've got large areas of deprivation, not only on the east coast, but other areas of Lincolnshire. And I think it is the Greater Lincolnshire that we are talking about. So I'm really excited about it to get going and let's try and make a bit of a difference to our residents and to ourselves.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, I think it is a change, and we need to make sure we are, do our best to make sure these changes give the benefits that they hopefully will bring. Okay, recommendations are on page 12, and there are two. One is that we formally establish this, we take part with this Integrated Care Partnership, and then councillor Woolley is, is our representative on, on the joint committee. Is that agreed? All those in favour? Thank you. That's agreed. That's unanimous. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on then to item six, which is recommissioning Best Start Lincolnshire Services, Early Years and Family Service, and the Inclusion Service for children in their early years and their families within Lincolnshire. So councillor Bradwell?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Actually, I enjoyed that introduction. It gave a full overview of actually what, what I was going to say. But yeah, Best Start Lincolnshire is about from birth to starting school, really. And all these services are in the one contract. And actually, what we've had before has worked very well, and we want to go out and re-procur these services again. I think it is important, especially with Covid, and there is some stats in the paper that show that, you know, those, those last two years that with young people, especially toddlers and that, not going into children's centres and interacting with other children and that, you know, as they start schools, they are going to perhaps lag behind their peers who've gone before. So there is quite a lot of work to do from the services within this paper in trying to get young people, you know, it is all about experience, isn't it? When you're a little toddler or when you're one or two, we've all, perhaps lots of us have had young children and, you know, so, and that's their learning so that when they go into school, they're ready and they're excited to do all sorts of different things. So, but we have seen during that period, and we, we will have seen in schools as well, that children have missed out on a considerable time of, of not having that stimulation that they might have had before. So that's all I'll say. I'll hand over to officers. But as I say, is, it is, you know, I think this is a worthy contract that we are giving a service to young people and families in Lincolnshire. So I'll hand over.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we're here to share the findings of the review of the commissioned Best Start Lincolnshire Services and to recommend the recommissioning of the services via a competitive tender process. So the Best Start Lincolnshire Services include two separate contracts. So the first is the Early Years and Family Service, which provides early learning activities for children in their early years and their parents and carers. These activities are mainly run from our children's centres, and they focus on supporting the development of children to give them the very best start in life and make sure they're ready for school. The service also provides skills development support for eligible parents and carers to help them enter training, volunteering and employment. A crash facility is available through the contract to help those parents and carers to access skills development where there is no other childcare option available. We've then got the second contract, which is for the Inclusion Service. That at the moment runs in Boston, South Holland and Lincoln, so it's not a countywide service. And that's for ethnic minority families with children in their early years. That service supports those families to engage in the Early Years and Family Service. And it includes the running of multinational groups at children's centres, targeted home visits and translation support at key meetings. Those contracts are due to end at the end of March 2023. And their combined annual value currently is just over 1.9 million pounds a year excluding VAT. The council doesn't have an explicit statutory duty to commission those early childhood services, but there are some specific related statutory duties under the Childcare Act 2006, which is set out in your pack on page 90, that these services do directly support the delivery of. Within the committee papers as well, there's a commissioning plan at appendix one, which sets out in detail the key findings of the review that has been undertaken. And I just wanted to draw your attention to some key points, if I may. So there are some areas within our needs assessment data that you'll have noted that we really need to take note of and respond to. And the proposal is that these services will address some of those key areas of need. So we're seeing that our early years population is decreasing. Our communities are becoming more diverse, and in fact, we've seen a 20% increase since 2017 in children under the age of five from ethnic minority backgrounds, and that's across the county. The public health data related to children in their early years. There are some areas where we are behind nationally and some, so for example, pregnant women smoke, pregnant women smoking at time of delivery, immunisation rates and breastfeeding rates. However, there are some really positive areas that we're above the national average in terms of children accessing early year settings at their two-year-old, through their two-year-old and three-year-old entitlements. And we're seeing through health visitor checks that children at two to two and a half have, are achieving a good level of development higher than nationally. Although we are seeing that at the end of the early years and foundation stage, which is at the end of reception year, that the good level of development of children isn't as high as it is nationally, we're just below. Registration at children's centres continues to be really high, which is, is fantastic. However, we recognise that particularly because of the pandemic, when children haven't been in children's centres as much, that we need to make sure attendance is consistently high as well. That's a key area. There's a very strong evidence base, as councillor Bradwell has set out, that the first 1,001 days of a child's life are absolutely critical to their development and play a, and play a fundamentally important role in the life chances of, of children and, and as adults as well, which is why we really believe having strong early year services available for all children and young people is really vital, and that it's not just about targeted interactions at that point. So you'll see that what we're proposing is a really strong universal offer, still with some very targeted areas, but that's, that's really important, getting it right for all children at that age. The current services have performed, have performed well throughout their contract time. Obviously, they were significantly impacted due to the pandemic, when children's centres couldn't operate in the normal way. But we're seeing a good recovery with families getting back into activities. The performance has been set out in more detail in your report. And what we do have is some really good feedback from families about their engagement in those services and the difference that they've made to them. Some key bits to pull out from engagement in terms of what people are telling us. They really like attending sessions within children's centres, but they also want access to more sessions within their communities. They, they also really liked having outdoor sessions during the pandemic. So that's something that we'd like to continue going forward as well. We've seen that obviously different areas have different needs, and we can't just put a blanket sessions over the whole county. Local areas need more targeted and bespoke sessions as well. So that's something that will be really important going forward in the model. We also are really focused on making sure that children who've got special education or needs and disabilities feel that they too are able to be included in those activities and that those sessions are fully accessible. So that's something that we're wanting to, to make sure happens going forward as well. And the other thing around the Inclusion Service is that, that we're seeing really good numbers of families from ethnic minority communities coming into children's centres. The, the sort of growth in that population across the whole county, we feel that that service would be really valued over the whole county and not just in Boston, South Holland and Lincoln areas. What we did notice was a key area of duplication around the skills development element of the contract. Within the council's internal adult skills and family learning service, we feel that, that's where the duplication lies. So at the moment, through the skills development offer, eligible users are signposted to existing learning. That service within the council is already brokering and arranging. And we feel that actually, that, that's a duplication and not a best use of resource. So we're looking at altering that, and I'll just come into that in a bit more detail in a moment. The model for the new contract isn't proposed to significantly change, but there are some refinements based on obviously the review work that we've done. We're wanting to make sure, as I've said, that we have that really strong core offer of universal services, but also some targeted work activities available for families in their local communities as well. And there will be a very strong emphasis on making sure that those critical naught to three years, that we've got a really good base of sessions for that age group. Because most of our children, by the time they get to three, are actually accessing their early year setting. Although there will still be services available for that age group up until they go to school. We, we are not looking to commission a separate skills development offer. We believe that there's high quality provision available already to families via the Adult Skills and Family Learning Service, which is already used by our parents and carers under the current contract. And so we consider this to be a low impact for families in making that change. We've worked closely with the council service to map out the offer, and have confirmed that they can, they can meet the demand that's there from the parents who might ordinarily access this service. Other professionals can also signpost there. And we recognise in terms of the outcomes that have been delivered through the contracts and what's been delivered through the internal service, that the, we're seeing more, more people taking part who are entering into education, employment and training through the, through the, through the council service. We propose to widen the Inclusion Service to a countywide service to create a more equitable offer for, for the reasons that I've explained to you. But what we're wanting to do is make sure that that service very much focuses on targeting families who might be open to children's services or particularly vulnerable and hard-to-reach communities, and making sure that those families are supported to access the Early Years and Family Service, and that they're also supported with translation support where needed. Although if it's general translation, we will be making sure that we utilise the council's corporate translation service more. That's, that will be a slight change at the moment, but it will still mean that families have access to translation support at an appropriate time. The funding of the service will alter because of those slight changes that I've mentioned there. There will be a saving from not continuing to commission a skills development element, which we do not feel is the best use of resource. We feel that that is a duplication. Although increasing the reach of the Inclusion Service will mean that the costs of that service will increase. And a breakdown of the proposed funding is, is found on page 29 of, of the report pack. Overall, we anticipate the contract price will be up to just over 2 million pounds per annum, if that is included. But there will be a net saving of around 200,000 pounds based on the current contract price. We're recommending to executive that we recommission the Best Start Lincolnshire Services via an open competitive tender process with two lots to commence on the 1st of April 2023, for a three-year period initially, with the option to extend for two years after that's subject to performance. Two lots will ensure that we don't minimise market interest, particularly given the Inclusion Service will require staff to be fluent in multiple languages. And so we tend to have a smaller market available to us for that service. We're recommending that the executive delegates to the executive councillor, sorry, the executive director of Children's Services in consultation with the executive councillor of Children's Services, the authority to take all decisions necessary to conduct the procurement process, up to and including the award and entering into of the contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Scrutiny comments, councillor Kendrick? There's substantial comments of scrutiny. Would you like to just summarise them for us? They have been circulated.
Yes, thanks, Leader. Yes, the Children and Young People scrutiny committee unanimously agreed to support the recommendations in the report at our meeting on the 17th of June. And during the discussion, there were some key points raised, and I'll briefly summarise those. The first one was market engagement undertaken so far had indicated there was sufficient market to have multiple providers to bid for contracts, and there'll be an element of competition. That was something that was raised by members. Secondly, a maximum contract price would be included where, when the tender goes out to market so that bidders know that they have to be within the financial envelope. Assurance is provided to us that even with the efficiency saving, the financial envelope would be sufficient, and there'd be no cost pressures within the current service. Bringing the services in-house, we were told, had been explored, but there'll be significant implications on staffing costs for, for those transferred to the council as they would be eligible for the local government pension scheme. And in addition, families like working with the community involuntary organisations and see their independence from children's social care as positive. I think it's the informality was the, the aspect there. It was suggested that the promotion of children's centres should be improved, and this was raised by several members in the meeting, would help increase attendance. And in response, it was confirmed that this expectation, expectation would be clearly articulated within the specification when the tender goes out to market, and that the council would work with future providers to improve communications and make it feel more local to local communities. That was something we were concerned about. The pandemic, we're all aware, had affected young people's development in communication, language skills, social skills. As lockdowns had limited their exposure to, to other people. And there's no currently pro, no, there's currently no progress data available. But once released, there will be an opportunity to evaluate and benchmark where Lincolnshire was compared to the national figures and prioritise it accordingly. It was, it was recognised, this was an issue actually across the whole country, and it's been considered at a national level. And finally, feedback was being obtained from primary schools, we understand, to understand where they may be progress gaps with young people starting school. And it was recognised an area that could be strengthened going forward was the provider working more with local schools. I think one of the main themes that came out of our discussion, Leader, was, was the, the emphasis on the impact of the pandemic on young people, very young people, I should say. And that's something we, we want to look at. And we requested an update report be brought to a future meeting on the impact of the pandemic and the post-pandemic recovery, including detailed information on progress data, immunisation levels and health visit. data, immunisation levels and health visiting. And I'm pleased to confirm the committee will consider this report at our meeting on the, the 2nd of December this year. That's my brief summary, leader. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Kendrick. Comments, questions? Councillor Davies.
Thank you, leader. I, I think when the Jesuits, Jordan Peterson and Lincolnshire County Council Children's Services all agree on something, it's important that we take notice. The, the evidence that the importance of the first four to five years of children's lives is well established. And I think this report is excellent in highlighting the good work that's been done in Lincolnshire. But it does show the gap. And I think it shows quite a scary gap in some instances of children we're not getting in front of. And I, I think probably with respect to my colleagues, probably one of the few members of people in this room who in recent times has found themselves in a children's centre with a child covered in paint, I can tell you that it's a very rewarding experience for the children. The one thing I don't think we, and I just touch on in the report, it doesn't go into as much detail, and I want to share with you, is how important it is for parents as well. Particularly even, you know, very nuclear families like mine. When my, my, my wife used to go to the local children's centre, it was a good opportunity to meet people, especially living in rural Lincolnshire with children, you don't always get that opportunity. We're fortunate, we've got friends and family nearby. But the friendships that have been established at the children's centres stay with us now. And I think it's an incredibly useful tool for promoting a bit of cohesion. I think the ability to help people learn the language is key. But we all know, those of us that have had children, that you often, you're communities based around schools. So those networks that come out of schools and out of children's centres are really important. I think there's more we could do to promote them. I mean, we've started holding our transport board meetings, well, we did prior to the pandemic, at the children's centre in Grantham. And it's a fantastic facility. I'm just disappointed it's not ringing out with the sound of being used more. And I know that's not the want of the staff trying, but it's that general piece that I know the, the committee have picked up on. We do need to do more and it is about supporting predominantly mothers, but families with small children during those difficult times. And it's not just, dare I say, families that are from weaker socio-economic backgrounds that have problems, all do. And I think rurally, that's as much of an issue as it is for urban areas. So I would like to continue the outreach that I've seen. I know, I think there's quite a lot been done in Caithorpe, for example, that's been really good, local tours over the years. And it's that kind of work we need to support. The only thing I'd like to see, and it may come out of the benchmarking, is in terms of the contract work, can we do more to set performance levels or at least aspirations? Because I know it's very difficult in the contracting process to say, you know, we know where we're weak. Can we, what is our ambition for those areas? Because we know when the children are born on the hole and registered, what, can we be really ambitious at saying, I don't know, you know, once a quarter, once a month, we want to see those children in a, in a care, in a children's centre in some way, or half of those children, or three quarters, or 90%? Whatever it is, but just something really positive to aim for. But yeah, I think this is a really important service and we don't talk about it enough.
Thank you for that. I mean, I think there's a, yes, I think a very, because I, you know, the issue about physically coming together, I suppose the question is, for me, in terms of the, how this is being packaged up, will it encourage enough innovation? Because obviously the physical coming together, there is mention in the scrutiny comments about using the internet, which isn't physically coming together. And of course, we all know there's lots of people who we would like to be more engaged with this programme, which aren't. So I'm just wondering, is there going to be encouragement for the, the bidders to actually come forward with some innovation to try and extend the grip, whether it's outreach or, and indeed, things like translation services which can be done. You don't need, you know, it can be done electronically now and all the rest of it. But I just wonder how, you know, what, how, because obviously if we just ask for a standard contract continuation, that's what we'll get and probably what we want, to keep the best of what we've got, but also move forward in terms of just trying to catch those people who probably need it most.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Chairman. I think what, it's really great to hear about people's personal experiences of going to our children's centres. I think it's a real affirmation of the work that's being led there. I also think it's important that we remember that this is one service that sits in our children's centres and we have a whole wider set of services that are delivered in our communities through our children's centres and through the outreach. So I'll come to Charlotte in a minute about some of the specifications, because we are doing some work on that innovation. But also through the work we've been doing around our family hubs, we've been looking at what does the offer need to be for each community? And then how do you link all of that together? How do you bring all of those services together so that people can see very easily what they can access where? How do we make sure that in some areas, although we are really well placed for children's centres, we still have our 48 children's centres, we're still working hard? Because of our rural nature, that still means that for some families, the travel to the children's centre is not easy. Therefore, what are we doing in the church halls? What are we doing in the, in the town halls that we can signpost families to? And also, what are other people doing? How do we make sure that we know our communities well so we can signpost to all of those different things? Because there's lots of activities running and it's about the children's centre being the hub for that family activity so that we can signpost it all. I'll let Charlotte come in on some of the technical.
Thank you. Yeah, so just to respond around the performance and monitoring of it, first of all, if I might. So it was to assure you that through the, when we're going out to tender, we've got a really clear set of measures in terms for the provider. What we recognise though, because this is about a number of different agencies working together, say Midwifery, for example, and our health visiting service who also deliver a lot from within children's centres, and they do so, they have co-delivery with the people that will provide this service. So some of the data is ours as well. So we bring together not only the data from the provider in terms of what they're doing, but also our public health data, other early years data, and make sure that we're looking at it holistically. So we've absolutely got some very clear KPIs and targets for the provider, but I also wanted to assure you that we're then marrying that with other data. We review that as a whole and look for our early years population, what are, what are the needs? And then we can target that and make sure within our centres that the provider is then, you know, making sure the sessions are looking at areas that are really important. For example, if vaccinations and immunisation rates are really low in an area, will we make sure that the provider understands that? And we make sure that we're doing some really good promotional work through our children's centre sessions? So there absolutely are key targets in there. So just to assure you of that, and we're sort of happy to share that.
Yeah, thank you. That, that is reassuring. What do you have a top-level ambition for what this, in terms of numbers, to what this will deliver? Or is it, is it too big a thing to do that?
Do you mean as in the numbers of children coming? Yeah, we, we have targets set around that and we monitor.
What is it?
Performance against that.
Well, I'll have to refer to the exact number in here, but they, but we, at the moment, so looking at the births that are registered each year, what we, we have over 95%, I think it is, of children whose births are registered each year, who come to, who are registered then at a children's centre, which is absolutely fantastic. So most, most families are getting the message really early on, register with a children's centre. If we look then at the numbers that come through the door, what we were seeing, we, we're seeing that over 50%. So that is great for the over 50%, but for us, we have specific targets around, we would, we would want that higher than 50%. But for us, it's also about sustained attendance. So it's not just about coming to one activity, it's about coming regularly and getting the benefit. So the targets that we have for the provider, we, we can't solely put on the provider that they are responsible for the numbers through the door, because we've got children coming through the door for all sorts of other activities too. But we monitor them on sustained attendance, so children that they get in, and then making sure those families continue to come back because there's a value in what they're, I don't know if you've got any actual figures, sorry.
I'm just looking at the, sorry, just looking for the data in terms of how many they, they supported, that's in the commissioning plan from, from the early years and family service.
Sustained figure seems to be critical.
Yes, and it is. And, and so that's what we're looking at. And so for the new service, for the, when we go out to tender, we will have a specific target in there around sustained attendance and looking at that. And, and I think at the minute, we're looking at potential sustained attendance of looking at, they're attending at least twice a month and to then look at how that is monitored across the, the piece. But that is some work that we're doing with our performance team as well at the moment in terms of then how we can monitor that sustained attendance through that. So that will be a way that, as you say, that sustained attendance rather than all just looking at the actual numbers, as Charlotte said, would be a key thing for us.
And, and the final thing to add is when you take all of the services through children's services, we also have a target for how much, how many people were getting through the children's services, through the children's centres across all of those services. And I think that's at about 80%, but I would have to double check. And that's something that's reported through regularly to councillor Bradwell and, and others.
Thank you for that. So sustained attendance is, in terms of children, early years, is, is 50% attendance? And how much of that is sustained attendance, do you know?
So the 50% is of those born in that category, 50% of them have, over 50% of them have come into a children's centre. The sustained attendance rate, it's, it's measured in a different way. So it's based on of the children that come into a children's centre, how many then keep coming back to a children's centre. So it's, so of that amount, have you?
Don't want the 25%, 30% ballpark? Yeah, that's, yeah, okay. Well, just look at that. So that, that's very.
Did you, while Sarah's looking, did you want me to respond around the innovation element? Sorry, because I didn't come to you back to you on that. So we, the specifications altered quite in terms of our approach from the last time we went out for this service to in terms of the drafting of it now. Because we recognise we were very prescriptive around what we wanted. And actually, we feel on reflection that maybe, you know, the provider was then very fixed on what was in the specification and we wanted to, and we want to make sure that we have that space for innovation. So that's absolutely reflected in the spec now. And some of the things that we want to make sure are still there are the, the use of community venues, it's not just about children's centres, it's not just restricted to buildings so it can be outdoors too. And it gives the provider, although they need to have an, you know, we want them to have evidence-based sessions, that they have the flexibility in terms of the, how creative they can be in the delivery and where they're delivering from. One of the other key things is we should, assuming that this decision is taken, supported, have a six, a six-month implementation period. And our plan is with whoever is successful on both of the contracts to work with our naught to 19 service and our early years service and midwifery in terms of the implementation. So we'll spend a lot of time workshopping and making sure before the contract even starts that we've got a really clear, you know, plan in terms of getting the service right and having that innovation. So the specification's been altered to allow more innovation to come through. We've been, we have been specific around widening, you know, outreach, outdoor activities. And then the implementation period will be really important for us, working holistically together to then say what, you know, what will happen within centres.
And then just to pick up on the query around, first of all, numbers attending. So as of end of March this year, over the year, this, this early years and family service, there were 71,613 children that attended and that's 63,561 families. And then in terms of sustained attendance, it's overall attendance at children's centres at the end of quarter four, so that'd been March 22, it was 58.2% sustained attendance. And just in terms of some of those figures, obviously some of those might be slight, double counting, but it won't be, it will be minimal, yeah.
Okay, I've been just interested also in promotion. I know we do a lot of promoting of children's centres. Is there any sort of other things we could be doing in terms of, because, you know, it is a, 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 something there for the community and it's that one of those services we provide that sometimes people think we only do potholes at the county council, but it's one of those things embedded in every community. And not only would then people, if they probably knew more about it, they would be more inclined to use it, but also it does show that all the communities that there is a presence there which we are providing. So I know we've done a lot of promotion, but I just wonder in terms of how that's worked and is there any other ways we can sort of get them even more, give them a more higher profile, particularly on the children's centres and the outreach? What views you've got on that, Charlotte?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, we're, I suppose we're strengthening through the contract in terms of what our expectations are around the promotion of services. At the moment, the local authority tend, we tend to lead a lot on the direct promotion through social media. I think the, the fact that we're looking at expanding more into other community venues as well means that we've got more opportunities for family, you know, so if, if it's at the local library or we know that we have pop-up children's centres in some of our primary schools as well, they, they, they're then promoting to families that, you know, in their local area as well. So it's also about using other providers, midwifery and health visitors are already promoting. One of the things I think is really key, and I know we've not mentioned it here, but is family hubs going forward. And there'd be a whole, in relation to family hubs and some of that, obviously the activity that takes place in children's centres now and in communities are sort of part of the family hub offer as well. And that all of the promotion around family hubs, when they come on board, children's centres will be part of that. And I will, I will expect that, I would expect there's going to be, you know, a very clear engagement plan and communication plan around family hubs. And so we would expect by virtue of that, that children's centres will be part of that.
That's, that's fine, thank you. Any further comments, please? Councillor Davies?
Actually, Charlotte just raised a point I was going to actually ask about, about the family hub initiative. Because obviously in recommissioning services now, I wanted to find out whether there was any danger that the family hub initiative would then override what we're trying to achieve through this decision today, which I'm fully supportive of, let be, be clear. But I just wanted to get some clarity around the landscape, if it changes, and how the commissioning of this service would fit with the family hub initiative.
Thank you, councillor. So the, the family hub initiative, we're really well placed to deliver that because we commission services like this. So what family hubs, what the government's doing through the family hub programme is strengthening early help, early intervention, early years work across communities throughout the country. Lincolnshire's always really highly valued its early help and its early years work. So actually, this is absolutely complementary to the family hub work. The family hub work will further strengthen the work of this service and the children's centres and will develop our digital offer so that we're reaching even more families. But there are no risks in commissioning this at this point and there being any conflict with the family hubs. We are really ready to deliver those. Thank you.
A lot of councils over the last 10 years have moved away from children's centres and that, and, and now they're going to have to resurrect something. Whereas we, well, I suppose I own offices, I love, I, I think the children's centres are really valued by, as we've heard by families, but I think as a council, they are something that we've managed to keep. And they, they have been valuable. I mean, as I said, in the, in the pandemic, our, our midwives were working there doing antenatal care for mums because it wasn't safe for mums to go into the hospital. So, you know, because we weren't using them in the normal guise, we were able to, you know, put something else in there. And that really helped mums as well, because obviously in the first wave, it wasn't good to go into a hospital unless you needed to. So I think actually we are, like officers have said, because we have managed to maintain ours and they are across the county, I think we, you know, really going to be able to step forward really quickly with the family hubs and what we have to deliver from them.
Good. Any further comments? I mean, yes, part of that we did when we were savings, we were finding safeguarding was one of those areas we did protect. And I think that's kept us in a good, a good place in terms of, you know, making sure that those really valuable services, which could be cut, we have kept going. Okay, the, excuse me, the recommendations are, excuse me, are on page 17. So basically asking for your approval to recommissioning these, these services and then delegates to the director of children's services in consultation to do the details. All those in favour? Please show. Thank you. That's agreed. Thank you. I don't think there's any against. So then, thank you for that, childrens. So then move on to adults, which is the substance misuse grant monies. So councillor Boket.
Thank you. Right, so we're bringing this report today to tell you about the additional funding the national government has allocated. to tell you about the additional funding the national government has allocated to Lincolnshire to support delivery of the 2021 National Drug Strategy. This is a welcome 10-year plan and at present the total grant fund of 1.4 million, which is for the prevention and the treatment to work in partnership across Lincolnshire to improve not only our health and wellbeing outcomes, but also to reduce crime and especially drugs and alcohol abuse that many of the residents are taking. So I'll pass over to Derek and he will take you through the report.
Thank you, Leader. Thanks councillor Bokeh. The report goes into the detail, so I'll just do the high level really. The government published a 10-year drugs plan in December 2021. In February 2022, there was announcement that would, that we would receive additional funding at a local authority level. From April 22, we were asked to bid and apply for two separate funding streams. One around additional funding really into the core substance misuse service and the second around a rough sleeping drug and alcohol treatment grant. And we have just been given the confirmed amount for the first figure. And we're still waiting for confirmation on the second figure. So it's been a very, very tight timescale to apply for some of that additional funding. It's really, really positive that the government have focused on substance misuse. We already have a very effective substance misuse service across Lincolnshire that's delivered by We Are With You. And actually, just coming back to the Greater Lincolnshire conversation, north and north-east Lincolnshire also use We Are With You. And so what this report does is it, having looked at the options of how to deliver additional outcomes for the substance misuse strategy, the National Drug Strategy 10-year plan, we need to go down an exception route to the existing contract in order to be able to start to deliver additional capacity for people with substance misuse issues in Lincolnshire. And the government would ideally like us to start to deliver additional services above and beyond what we already do in July. So a really, really tight timescale to turn around. In consultation with both commercial and legal section, the suggestion is that we do come forwards here to executive to ask for that exception. What we will do with the additional funding is, a couple of things just to, for executive to be clear about. Firstly, as outlined in section 1.2 of the document, the additional funding is predicated on the fact that we continue to spend the roughly five and a half million pounds that we already spend out of the public health grant on substance misuse services in Lincolnshire. And that this funding is in addition to that. We can't move it around. We need to increase the overall proportion of spend in substance misuse. At a national basis, it outlines in, in 1.3, the government ambition to to create nearly 55,000 new high-quality treatment places. And the amount of money that we are being given is the Lincolnshire proportion of those. The application process, as I've described, was very quick. And you'll see within the paper, but we've also got background documents that we've submitted to the Office for Health Improvements and Disparities that's got more detail how and where that funding will go, including for the rough sleeper drug and alcohol treatment grant. We've additionally been approached by the probation service for an additional £200,000 to strengthen some of the substance misuse and alcohol services for people who are coming through the probation service, which is obviously a key, a key driver. So we were also seeking to put that money into the total pot, which gives us the overall total of an additional 1.4 million that we need to start to spend in 2223 on top of the existing five and a half million that we already spend in substance misuse. Apologies for all the numbers, but I think it's important that exec are clear on where we are. Section four just describes, as I've said, the time scales. This is a prime ministerial priority. He will be chairing a board that will look at the return on investment for this funding. And without going into the detail, I'm sure David can cover anything from a legal perspective, the mechanism we need to go through is to get an exception so that we can increase our existing contracts to provide some assurance for executive. The factors for that exception are that the exception will be within the light touch regime. The reason for that is the additional services required are consistent with the scope of the existing contract. They're proportionate and small by comparison to the original contract value. And the proposed modifications are not considered to be substantial therefore. So obviously, technical stuff, so I'll leave with David. The nub of it being, we will increase the offer to people with substance misuse issues across Lincolnshire in line with the national government 10-year strategy over the next 12 months, with the expectation that we will receive additional funding for years two and three coming forwards. And then we'll have a different mechanism probably by then about how we transact it.
Thank you, Derek. Yeah, obviously, it hasn't been to scrutiny, hasn't really had a proper scrutiny. So it does bother me. I understand it's a million, 1.4 million from government. You said the expectation is that, just what guarantees have we got this money will continue? And the second question is, of the 1.4 million, how much of it actually is that is going on staffing? And if the grant isn't continued at some time in the future, then what are the consequences of that?
So in terms of scrutiny, yeah, the time scales, and apologies, we probably could have got it through overview and scrutiny. And Lucy, who's the lead consultant, has spoken to councillor Parker to go through the details. So it is.
Is there a deadline on this?
Yes.
What is the deadline?
We're pretty well there now. We need to approve it now. We've bid for the money. We've had confirmation from OHI that the majority of the money is as expected, but we need that exception. So we've bid for the money and we will get the money, but we need to be able to demonstrate that we have a way to transact that money into the existing contract to increase capacity. In terms of the staffing, the majority will be staffing, as you would expect in this sort of area, although there are some costs in there for additional substance misuse, drug therapy. All of those costs, sorry, the vast majority of those staffing costs are with the provider, which is through a commercial arrangement, so that's We Are With You. We do need to put a couple of additional staff into the council because around all of this additional funding, there will be a very detailed performance framework that we have to report to central government on. But we can cover, we can cover that with this funding, that's appropriate. And obviously, if there's any costs involved, if we don't get the funding, then we would cover that through the public health grant anyway. So there won't be any additional costs to the council if the funding doesn't come forwards. We've been told by Secretary of State, we'll definitely get funding for three years, but obviously that's subject to normal treasury.
The current Secretary of State.
Yeah. Yeah. And the 10-year strategy says we will get it for the 10 years. But obviously, 10 years is a long time. So I'm very comfortable, we'll be okay for the 12 months with this. I'm comfortable that we've got as many assurances as we can get from central government departments and the Minister, Secretary of State around three years after that. Obviously, I can't, I can't make any promises on that.
So these providers who are going to hire all this staff, it'll be their risk then? If the government grant disappears?
Yes, it would be because we.
Are we sure about that? Are we sure about that, David?
Unless the contract somehow makes us responsible for that risk, then yes, it will fall on the providers.
Been around a long time and I've had these situations before where suddenly we're told, oh, by the way, it's our liability and not the, yeah, I have to say, I mean, I do support these sort of initiatives. I am concerned about the, it's all about hiring staff. And is that the only way we can help? And I know it's all tightly controlled by central government, what we do and all the rest of it. But, you know, I am, and you say it's not going to cost as many as public health money. Well, I think our public health money is our money, is my view. I might be a bit old-fashioned in that way, but, so, you know, it's not an ideal scenario, I have to say. Sort of being, you know, asked to agree this because it's, it's now or never. So I do have a concern now, I have to say. And yes, councillor.
I just want to come in about the contract really, because when we're going out with procurement, I mean, we give the provider X amount of money, so 1.4 million. It's up to them then, we stipulate what we want that money spending on. It's up to them then to take on the people to deliver that part of the contract. So I, I mean, I defer to David and we need to look at what we're saying in contracts. But for me, I always thought, give them a million pounds, we want this delivering. And we monitor that they deliver that, but it's up to them how many people they take on to actually do that delivery. But there's clearly going to be monitoring.
There could be redundancy liability in the future. Are we clear that where that will sit? And if it does sit with providers, they, because they're commercial providers, they will have to factor that into their calculation, financial calculation.
Can I just come in? Because even now with rough sleepers, the rough sleeper workers that work for the districts, they're only taken on on a one-year or a two-year contract so that they run with the MHCLG monies that's coming through. So when people are employed, even by the councils, they're only employed for that certain period. And then they have to wait until the money comes through again to see if their contract is going to be extended. And it's only fortunate that these people are dedicated to what they do, that they do go for a one- or two-year period contract. So that's how you get around that.
Well, I might be wrong, but I think once you're more than a year employed, you are then, redundancy does apply. I don't, what is the, I'm no expert in employment law, but I think that the rules on when you're liable, when you're eligible for redundancy are, have been tightened up considerably over the recent years, haven't they?
Yeah, I mean, that's true. I mean, there are occasions on which redundancy could arise in those circumstances. But I think the fundamental point here is councillor Mrs. Bradwell's, which is that the risk of that lies on the provider. So there would have to be a specific clause in the contract which pushed that liability back to the county council for the county council to incur that liability. So in the absence of that, the liability at the end of the contract for any cost will fall on the contractor.
And if the government then says, well, it's all in your public health grants. I've been around a long time, you know, so it says, well, you've still got it, it's there in your public health grant. Sorry, I'm sorry, you know, I am a bit cynical, but that's what happens, as we all know.
Just in terms of the public health grant, absolutely, it's a council grant. But I guess what I was trying to do is give executive assurance that we have a medium-term financial plan that all of the delivery of the public health services that are commissioned are covered within the public health grant allocation. That's subject to, obviously, it staying where it is. We've had a slight uplift this year and obviously inflation's going to be a challenge. But again, we can consume that smoke within that part of the grant. This is additional funding and the contract mechanism will make it clear that it's additional funding. We have guarantee for 12 months, well, we have guarantee from July through to the end of the financial year. That's what we will contract for until and unless we get confirmation from central government of year two and year three. We are expecting that, but we haven't got it yet. And I agree with you, Leader, it's been a very, very fast process. We would not, and I don't like going through this process, but the risk is not getting the additional 1.4 million pounds in for Lincolnshire. And other councils are obviously going through the same process to different, in different ways. And I would certainly not want to lose that 1.4 into a different councils pot when we actually could do a lot of really good, good stuff with it. I've been advised by commercial and legal. And it is, as councillor Bradwell said, we commission the provider and the risk lies on the provider.
Thank you. I just wanted to check on something you mentioned earlier, Derek, around the, any unspent money has got to be returned. With all of these places or full-time equivalents, through no fault of our own, bearing in mind you've just said that all other councils will be going out as well, what assurance have we got that we can actually fill these posts? Because I could just see us having posts, or at least our provider having posts, that they're just simply unable to fill. And then we have to send the money back, so we miss out both ways. Does that make sense?
It does. And in conversations with Office for Health Improvement and Disparities, if we have a contract in place that is live for the total amount of the funding for 2223, so the 1.4 million, and that contract is up and running, then that is basically the council has contracted for the full amount. Happy to go into a bit more detail outside of this meeting about the pros and cons of that. But that certainly means we've received assurance that as long as we've got the contract in place, we can use that money and the provider can use that money as required.
Richard.
Thank you, Leader. Just to come back, follow on from your point really, which is, unless I'm reading it wrong, there's, there's a few posts that do directly, that are directly employed by the county council. So I assume Martin's comments would fall within that. I think rough estimate is about £100,000 worth, isn't it, of salary each year? So we would have them costs, I assume, if, or would they be on fixed contracts as well?
So the proposal is to bring some people in on fixed term contracts. They would be within the analytical function. And what we do across council actually, but certainly in my division, is we recruit on generic job descriptions and then we deploy through objectives for the year. So we would employ some people who would be generic analysts. They would, for the purposes of this 12 months, be reporting on this work. But then after that 12 months, if the money did dry up, and I'll just say again, we have been given assurance, although not the cheque, that this will carry on for at least three years and the 10-year strategy says additional funding for 10 years. Then we would either, those contracts would end, or we could redeploy them in other analytical roles. And there is a huge amount of work that we are doing, just coming back to the integrated care system around population health management. And there is an increasing demand from our NHS colleagues for some of the expertise the public health analytical function gives. And so I'm really confident that we would be able to redeploy and bring money in from elsewhere to cover those costs.
Right. So how many of these extra staff will be actually analysts then? I mean, I think there's a, I think you make a valid point about when people are brought in, they can flexibly hopefully be redeployed somewhere else because as we know, there's a shortage of staff. I suppose the, yeah, okay, that's, yeah.
Yeah, so it's two additional posts, it's at the, on the pack, page 125, just after the table. In addition, 80,000 will be used to create two new posts at the county council.
Right, thank you for that. So in terms, obviously, it hasn't been scrutiny. So obviously, just presumably we'll have to go to retrospectively. I mean, I think there's an issue about how we measure success. Not to, I mean, obviously, I think that obviously other councils do need, so what would, you know, how will we know it's made any difference at all? And I don't know how you measure it. Is it less people rough sleeping or less people presenting at places or more people presenting, for example? So I think there's some issue about some overall scrutiny in terms of how the 1.4 million is actually effectively making difference.
Yeah, really good point. And that's really the point of those two posts, to make sure that we are keeping a really close track on the outcomes. Again, in the paper, we've put the national figures that government are expecting. I'm just scrolling through trying to find where those national, but there are figures in here about the increase in people who are successfully completing drug treatment, inpatient detoxification bed increases and things like that. So we haven't yet been given what the proportion of those will be for Lincolnshire. We've made that as part of the bid, but we're waiting for confirmation of that. And all of those figures will go into a performance framework. We have to report back to central government so we can absolutely build that into the scrutiny reports and obviously come back here if executive would like to see maybe halfway through the contract about where we're up to.
Councillor Brad.
Yeah, because actually, we are talking about people who are rough sleeping in that. just probably being the only people who take drugs. Actually, quite clearly, most domestic, violent domestic abuse incidents have drugs and alcohol involved in them. And actually, we'd be lots, we could do lots of stats on, because it isn't just about people who are living on the streets who are taking drugs. We know that serious violence, very often people who are committing serious violence are people who are off their heads with drugs. So I think it's not just about the health bit of this. This is about what's happening in the communities where we're living. And hopefully, you know, we, through the Safe Lincolnshire partnership, we would be able to analyse that data from the police as well, to prove that actually, you know, this has made a bit of a difference on the streets of Boston and Lincoln.
Thank you, Leader. I share, sorry, your reservations from the discussion we've just had. I think ultimately, for me, it's about the outcomes for people. And we all know that substance abuse is a very difficult subject, number one. Number two, areas of deprivation and substance abuse are equal, probably even more challenging. So I'm always concerned by government funding parts, because if we don't have a continuity of funding, and whilst I appreciate Derek's comments about we've got as many assurances as we can have, dealing with substance abuse means you must have a constant stream of funding. Because people drop into the programmes, they go clean, they get back on to drugs or whatever their issues are. So they go back into the programme. So this isn't something you just deal with as a one-off. You're dealing with a constant rolling programme of people. So, you know, for me, it's about the outcomes. And it's about the delivery of those outcomes. And that is what we need to be scrutinising. And that's what I think the overview need to be looking at. We've got to be better than just people coming in and going out and coming back into programmes. So that for me is a challenge. And also, surety of government funding. If we're going to have a 10-year programme, government just needs to commit a 10-year pot of money to this. Because otherwise, you can't physically plan what you need to do. And my background working in the music industry tells me, I know how difficult it is when people get into substance abuse. No matter which area of it, area of it is, it is a really challenging area.
Thank you for that. Yes, Derek?
Just to completely accept and agree with the points that have been made, what I've focused on is obviously the council implications for this particular additional funding. But the overall 10-year drug strategy has three core elements. One is breaking drug supply chains. That's led by the Home Office and the Police Service. The second is delivering a world-class treatment and recovery system. We already have a very good treatment system in Lincolnshire, I would argue, with a very good provider. This additional funding is in that component. And the third is achieving a generational shift in demand for drugs. And that's a whole system challenge from early education right the way through to probation service through the gate services for people who were coming out of prison. So it is a wraparound strategy with a huge amount of detail in there. I've just focused, because it is quite a technical question, on the substance misuse component of this. Very happy to bring back a further briefing or take through scrutiny of a broader briefing. And we are actually in those conversations about how to make sure that scrutiny is covered on the whole thing.
I think that would be useful in terms of, are we, is the incidence of drug misuse increasing or decreasing locally and nationally? I don't know. I think it's probably increasing, but I don't know. Things like that, which would be useful in contextualising, won't they? Okay, right. So unless somebody else wants to come back, there are page 121, there are three recommendations that, sorry? Oh, councillor Parker, thank you.
Yeah, very briefly. Yes, I was advised very late in the day about this paper. It seemed to me to be unreasonable not to allow it proceed. There is an opportunity for call-in, but I don't think the opposition groups will be exercising that. But I do think it's important that it comes to scrutiny. Although I have to say, I thought it's been pretty good interrogation of the proposal. But we could still look to the future as to what key performance indicators that we want to see in order to hold whoever gets the contract to account.
Thank you for that. That's very helpful. Okay, then. Right. So the recommendations are, and obviously with that sort of reassurance in terms of how this will be scrutinised in future, there are three recommendations that we enter into this contract of two separate contracts there and then delegates to the executive director in consultation. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. I think that was unanimous again. Thank you very much. Okay, then. We move then. Thank you for that. We now move on to the procurement of the telephony system. So I don't know who wants to start on this. Lee, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the report in front of you today sets out proposals to procure a new telephony platform that serves both the front and the back office functions of local authority. And it's a key component of our ability to deliver both the customer and the digital strategies. It's focusing on how we improve service delivery and enabling options for residents to self-serve and for us to better manage the interactions that come through. We know through the research we've done within the customer programme that expectations are changing. We are seeing an increase in the number of people using digital means to interact, particularly over the last two, three years. And this platform supports that further advancement of that shift in preference. If we were to stay as we are with our current solution, we'd not be able to deliver the ambitions of the customer strategy. We wouldn't meet future expectations from customers. And ultimately, we would not be able to reduce costs to the organisation in the way that we would like to reduce costs. What we also need to consider is how we effectively manage different communication channels within the organisation. And that includes phone, but also chat, email, web forms, social media contacts, et cetera, which are all different ways that customers would want to interact with us. And the proposed solution enables us to more effectively manage all of those channels and provide a more robust response to customers. So what we've seen over the last few years is quite a dramatic shift in telephony technologies. So a few years ago, it was pretty much just a standard kind of pick up the phone and answer solution. What we've seen, particularly as a result of COVID and the pandemic response, is a shift and an acceleration in innovation in that space. So what we now see is telephony being much more integrated into the way an organisation works through teams, which all of us use on a day-to-day basis, and with those mix of contact channels being blended into that. What we also see is an increase in the use of artificial intelligence to help manage interactions and also to provide enhanced service and improved performance reporting. So to get to this point, the council has developed a detailed specification. We have engaged with a number of services, contact centre with transport teams, et cetera, to understand the needs of local authority. And we've engaged through a Crown Commercial Service contract framework to engage a number of suppliers to understand what the market can offer and the likely costs, benefits and timelines for that implementation. That marketing engagement saw a strong response. And the evaluation of that saw anywhere S365 as a platform be identified as a preferable platform for the authority, with Simity being a proven partner to deploy that platform into the public sector setting. We believe that through that work, we can deliver an ongoing financial saving in the region of a million pounds over the next five years, as well as enhancing the customer service provision for the authority and delivering the ambitions of the strategy. So I don't plan to go any further than that in terms of the pitch, but more than happy to answer any questions that members may have.
Thank you for that. Councillor Parker, quite substantial comments from Britney.
Paper has been circulated with the notes of the OSMB meeting. I think the first point I would want to make on behalf of OSMB essentially is the opening paragraph. We were concerned, seriously concerned about the previous delays to the stabilisation upgrade of the telephony system. It was finally identified as being pre-COVID. And it raises questions about how scrutiny can be effective, how it can know about certain things that are not operating well. We were assured that there were many reasons for this delay, technical complexities, the involvement of different organisations and key stakeholders, disruption to the communications market during the pandemic. But still, this was something that was not within the, should we say, grasp of our, excuse me, scrutiny committees to be able to look at. So it raises questions about how do we get intelligence about things that are not going wrong over quite a long period of time? Now, there may well be decent explanations for it, but that's the first point that troubled us. The response we heard to the question about why now, okay, so there's been long delays, was answered to the extent that there were certain good things coming together, next generation telephony. The pandemic had seen disruptions, but that was over. And organisations like ours should be thinking about, and others had, of moving en masse towards alternative technologies to communicate. Okay. Now was the right time. The next point I want to make is relating to concerns being expressed about the use of artificial intelligence, AI or bots, as part of our automated interface, because we didn't want service users to be put in positions where they were not being treated as individuals, but were getting responses based on AI. We were really pleased to know that testing had been carried out by various groups of users from a diverse pool, including staff members. So we appreciated that an effort had been made in order to get customer feedback and customer opinions to be fed back into the system. That's as much as I'd like to say.
Thank you for that. So perhaps if you just, the obviously valid comments about the, you know, how, why it's taken so long. And obviously, we've had to do an upgrade of the current system to keep it going. So just give us a, just reprise what you, I mean, I wasn't at the scrutiny, so I don't know. But just an explanation of where we've got to, why we are, why we haven't gone, be able to go straight into the new contract. Thank you.
Yes, the current advice system has been on premises for over a decade. And of course, in its lifetime, it's had a number of sort of maintenance activities provided to it. The, eventually, that became a project to accomplish a version upgrade, because we have this rather confusing mix of things that are sorts of, sort of patches and others that are major version changes. And the project really existed for two purposes. One was that we started to experience instability with the corporate telephony system. And some of you may remember some quite long outages that we had. So the project was really used to build a sort of service wraparound that platform and deal with those business impacts. And it was, has been very successful in that regard. So the people engaged in that project and the organisations are sort of involved in it, and there were quite a few, worked and were managed within the guise of the project to deliver that stability. So the upgrade sort of is, there are a great many components in this thing, many dozens of components. And some of the upgrades happened some years ago and achieved that stabilisation. What never happened, it's only happening really quite recently, was the final transition of the core contact centre functionality to a new box, basically. And we had a series of technical delays. It is standard processing these to look at any project that's running long. Not in terms of budget so much. The commercial impact was somewhat contained in the contractual instruments used to buy the original project. But in terms of timeline, and at no point could we see a better option that didn't increase cost or take on unnecessary risk in terms of moving to a new platform with no significant business benefit. So the decision was made that the least worst option, if you like, is it felt some weeks, was to keep working hard, frustrating as it was with these large organisations to deliver the upgrade. And that has been our strategy. What's changed, of course, is that we have been observing over the last few years, a collision course, if you like, between classic telephony companies and IT companies. COVID, for a respiratory illness, did something I wouldn't have expected. It seemed to steepen the angle of that collision, and it happened much sooner. The Working From Home Directive was highly disruptive to the market, and we are somewhat beneficiaries of that. And the telephony business now is not about plonking phones on desks. It's about bringing communications you need to things like your team's client, giving you one client that can do everything. And this platform is, it does all that, but also somewhat regarding it as a contact centre undersells it, because it is about managing your dialogue with the customers. And regardless of which channel they're talking to you on. So in terms of the project delays, it has been discussed on a few occasions, actually, in the IMT board. And councillor Davies and I have had a number of discussions around the timeline of this. And indeed, for us, scrutiny, using the word generically, happens in the IMT board. So I think there is a discussion that I'll pick up with councillor Davies, councillor Parker, to say at some point, should it be referred to scrutiny, where we feel it's more than an exception, if you like, it's exceptionally exceptional, if you like. We have a lot of projects come and go in exception. But I think there is a conversation as to how do we meet your concerns in terms of visibility to scrutiny.
Yeah, I mean, fair enough. I mean, I think, in summary, what you're really saying, it actually paid off to be a delay a bit, because we probably ended up with something which is, we're a bit ahead of the game, instead of having something which then we were sort of stuck with in old world. But I mean, there is this issue, because obviously, most stuff that does go to the board, because I sit on the board, does actually then emerge, doesn't it, through the scrutiny process. But I think councillor Parker, I mean, I think the other point you made was that actually the patches or the, whatever you want to call it, actually were very successful. So in terms of, apart from some of the outages, we, in terms of performance output, that was successfully dealt with, although on a temporary basis. So I understand that. But there is that way. But you're clear, there were outages, but apart from that. But there was no performance impairment, say, in the CSC or anything like that, which would have then translated into performance which then scrutiny could have looked at, was there? Is that correct?
That's good.
Yeah. So, yeah, valid point. So we do try, because obviously, we do a lot of planning. And, you know, as part of, you know, I suppose as part of what the chief exec does, as part of her briefing sessions with opposition as well, if stuff like that is not quite in the mainstream, but an issue is probably the other area where it probably could be dealt with.
Yeah, we'll follow that up. I'll talk with Andrew and follow that up outside the meeting.
In terms of the, obviously, you talked about, scrutiny also mentioned about the AI technology and all the rest of it. But of course, as you said, it's not about, we've, clearly, we want people to move away from telephones and be able to self-serve, don't we? So this, just some explanation of how this new system will encourage that.
Yes. The cost per contact when we use human beings is obviously our highest. And so whilst it probably matters less now whether they still call us on a telephone, we will have the option of using AI and cognitive voice computing, as it's called. We've all spoken to robots. I think it's been very clear in this process that there is concern, very understandably, about not using those robots to the detriment of the service. We've all had experiences where you're trying to spend money, you get through in 20 seconds. And any other type of contact takes several hours. You know, there is very clear that's not the appetite of the council. But I think Lee could talk about the sort of human-centred service design element of it.
Yeah. So in really simple terms, we recognise that the council provides a really, really wide range of services. Some of those are very transactional in nature, where the bot or the AI technologies can support. So some things such as renewing a library book is a very linear process. It's simple to automate that kind of process. And it's something that you can make accessible through the technology pretty much 24/7. However, for some of the work that we're doing in children's services or in adults as examples, is much more emotive, it's much more subjective, and there's a need for dialogue. So what we're seeking to do is provide the options for customers to be able So what we're seeking to do is provide the options for customers to be able to interact and transact themselves where they have the skills to do that, through the solution, and that could be a telephony solution that digitises that, or it could be through the web or through another mechanism, but also to retain the contact centre functionality to enable somebody that does need help to get through to somebody that's appropriately skilled to do that. Now, that bot technology, that AI technology, also helps us in terms of serving information to the call advisor, so it's able to find information out, that means that the call handler can give an accurate and robust response back to that customer. So instead of trying to maintain lots of different types of knowledge, we can move to a position where we've got a single knowledge base, a single version of the truth, if you like, and we improve customer service as a result. So it isn't purely about enabling somebody to do it themselves, it's about how we use those technologies to enhance our skill and improve delivery.
Okay then, so recommendations there on page 136, which basically we replace the AVEA system with the 365 cloud contract with Smitty, is it? I don't know how to pronounce these things. Why can't, I think IT companies just have a normal, at least they've got vowels in there, haven't they? So I suppose it's progress. And then we delegate to the director of resources in consultation with councillor Davies in terms of that. And there is a substantial saving as well, which is always good news. So is that agreed, all those in favour? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on then to the review of financial performance of the last financial year. So, Andrew, and then Michelle.
Thank you, leader. Yeah, so it's the first of the two sort of look-back reports on the agenda, so this one's focused on finance, just reflecting on what both you and Debbie said at the start of the meeting, actually, in terms of the LGA feedback from last week. I guess, given that volatility that we know is coming down the line, this might be, end up being a year that we look back on as seeing as relatively stable financially. You talked about inflation in the preamble, and we know coming down the line, significant energy spike costs that we'll experience later on in the year alongside many householders. We also know that there's a lot of volatility around public sector pay coming down the line, and also as well any impacts around the national living wage, so very much looking forward to a period of volatility. You referred to the two-year settlements as well, clearly very keen to see the impact of those on our finances too, particularly around what this rebadged fair funding review will look like. Clearly, the secretary of state said it's, something's coming this calendar year, so really keen to see the scope of that. In terms of the look back, I'll hand over to Michelle, but as I say, despite 65, 66 million pounds of COVID funding, it does feel relatively stable in this look back, but one volatility looking forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the report sets out the year-end position and explains variances on our revenue and capital budgets, making proposals on the carry forward of those variances. These proposals will go forward to council on the 16th of September, seeking approval to amend the budget in the current year. So the report's covering the period from April 21 to March 22. During that period, as has been mentioned, we've seen the easing of a lot of COVID restrictions. However, the pandemic has continued to reflect in our financial position, in that we've received a significant amount of grant to support the council's response to the pandemic. And although the impact of inflation's starting to obviously really build up now, we hadn't seen the impact of that in the revenue budgets during last year, although the impact of our supply chain workforce challenges, increased construction costs were starting to impact on our budget and the capital programme delivery. So in terms of our revenue budget, the table C on page 151 gives you a breakdown by our service directors on the balance of their revenue budget. The total under spend excluding schools was 13.582 million, which is two and a half percent of our net budget. The schools' under spend was 17.214 million, but as we know, the schools' under spend will carry forward automatically for them to use in future years. Much of the variances on our budgets are reported in line with what we've been reporting during the year, such as pressures on budgets for children in care and school transport, mainly being offset by uses of one-off funding and grants. We've continued to receive COVID grant funding during 2122, with over 62 million pounds worth of general and specific grants to cover the costs incurred, specific grants being around 45 million, and the general grant being 15 million. All of the general grant specifically was used during 2122, and we do know that that will not continue into 2223, although we continue to see some of the impact of the pandemic filtering through into our revenue budgets. The capital programme, table D on page 155, shows a summary of the capital position against budget. The net programme under spend in 2122 was just over 50 million, which is around 33% of the net programme. Most variances are timing slippage rather than under spend on project costs, so with, particularly around some of the larger projects, such as the major road schemes and LET schemes. Also, we had an under spend on the capital corporate development contingency of just over 11 million pound. Some of that under spend was offset by an overspend on the highways maintenance programme, so in line with their planned programme of work, which allows for poor weather, that there was an overspend on the highways maintenance programme. We do have reserves to draw down to cover some of that, and with all capital budgets, any under or overspends will automatically carry forward to be part of the budget for next year. So all capital budgets will be reviewed again as part of the budget setting process for 2324, just in light of some of the comments that have been made around supply chain and inflation, just to ensure that the current project budgets are adequate and the programme remains affordable. In terms of the carry forward, table E on page 161 of your report gives a breakdown of the proposals for the carry forward on the revenue budget. So as mentioned, after the schools, the net under spend for the revenue budget is 13.582 million. As per our financial regulations, any net underspends up to 1% on each of the director areas will be carried forward automatically, and the report sets out some of the proposals around the use of that. So that's 4.7 million. There are a couple of transfers, business as usual transfers, that are made in line with our financial regs, such as the surplus on this year's civil parking enforcement, and a couple of grants, which basically leaves a balance for consideration of 7.392 million. The report sets out the proposal for that as being 5 million to transfer to the development fund for local highways needs, effectively to support the highways asset maintenance strategy, and the remainder allocation of 2.3 to be added to the corporate contingency to respond to some of the issues that we've been talking about in terms of inflation and volatility in our budgets. So I'll hand over to that point for any questions.
Thank you. Councillor Parker, over your scrutiny comments.
Sure. The paper's been circulated as have previous papers. I think the point that I'd want to start with, which reflected the mood of the OSMB meeting, was essentially about the loss of 120, sorry, 24 million pounds of government funding over the last two years. That had a big impact on the decision to take and to put 5 million pounds into highways, which was supported. We were particularly pleased about the Green Master Plan, which was a project within the development fund and part of the green agenda. Attention was given to energy saving aids, the need for it. Such new proposals, potentially as solar panels, heat recovery into council buildings. This particular building here is not designed at all for energy savings, and it seems as though members wanted to see improvements to all our premises in order to not only make them functional and save energy for, on an environmental reason, but also for a financial reason as well. The future was also of concern, and as has been said before, we are facing considerable financial volatility and uncertainty because of a number of reasons, inflation, ongoing pay negotiations, and higher energy costs. We, all we did was note those, but say that we would be particularly looking to see what we could do in relation to, not inflation or the negotiations over pay, but higher energy costs. There were two sort of recommendations from the floor, as it were. Firstly, that the ring fence funding of 335,000 for civil parking enforcement and permits should be used to employ more car parking attendants. And secondly, that some of the under spend proposed for the contingency budget should be allocated to the Green Master Plan to fund more energy saving schemes. That was the content of our discussion.
Thank you very much. Yes, I mean, I think the message we got from the conference last week from ministers, while although we know that inflation, I mean, our budget's predicated on 2%, both inflation and pay rises, clearly that will be nothing like sufficient, we don't know where they'll end up at the moment, so, but, and in terms of the two-year future settlement, that there is, I think there is a concern that will mean that any fundamental review of fair funding, et cetera, will probably be then deferred yet again till 2025. So I think one of those reasons why we just need, caution is probably still the watchword here in terms of where we're going to end up, and when we set our budget next year, will be some challenges, won't there? Yeah, I don't know, do you want to just talk about the, there's two specifics, obviously these are recommendations to the council in September mostly, so I don't know any views on those two specific issues, councillor Davie and Davies?
Well, I just, more of a general point for me, I agree with you, leader, I think we're within very challenging times, and I think how we move forward in the next 12 months or so is going to be very, very difficult in terms of getting a budget set for next year that's going to, that's going to be manageable. I agree, you know, I take councillor Parker's point, you know, increasing energy costs, increasing fuel costs, we need to do everything we can as an organisation to, you know, to peg those back to a level that are, you know, sustainable and manageable for us, because, you know, if we suddenly get a, you know, increase in the energy costs that adds 10 million pounds to our bottom line, then we're going to really have to make some very, very difficult decisions going forward. And, you know, I absolutely appreciate that, you know, every department across the authority is going to have to look at the budgets, including the ones I look after, and find savings wherever possible. And we are going to have to do things differently in the future. And, you know, it means all of us in this chamber, no matter which side, sort of my colleagues who are here today, are going to have to think very responsibly about what we do as an organisation going forward. I think, you know, the need to save money, and the need to do things differently, and the need to embrace the Green Master Plan opportunities, are absolutely, I think, a given for all of us. But likewise, we also need to do the day job maybe slightly differently as well in the future, and how we address that. With the inflation at the rate it is, with construction inflation, material costs running at 30% above what we had in budgets previously, you know, this is going to be, I think, one of the most difficult periods that local governments ever faced, quite honestly. And we all know that Lincolnshire's population has grown over the last decade, according to the census data, you know, 6% generally, 11% in Lincoln. It's quite clear government funding has not, not only not kept pace, we have fallen further and further behind, and the day of fairer funding has been put back further and further. So, you know, this is going to tax all of us, I think, in terms of how we meet the challenges. You know, the paper today, leader, is a look back, and, you know, you can't change what we've done and the decisions we took, and we can't change the fact that things have been underspent for various reasons. But, you know, it's the future we need to be thinking about, and I think, you know, the challenges are laid out well, and I'll leave it there.
Yeah, I mean, I think we already know our current contingency will not be sufficient because of the pressures which we know are coming, and I think you're right, it's going to be challenging, and of course, even with the deferring any major relook at the distribution budget, means that the census, last year's census won't be included, again, that mitigates against counties like Lincolnshire, which are growing faster than average, and that increase, extra increases, is then not set into the system, so for all sorts of reasons. We'll see where the government gets to in terms of how it responds to this, because, you know, if we feel a bit of a trouble, I think there will be some councils which will be really in, well, we know there are some councils in big trouble, and how the government manages that situation, I don't know, but let's hope it's not, people are rewarded for not balancing the books, and then those of us who do balance the books somehow are expected to just carry on and get on with it. Any further comments, please? I mean, I think these, parking is a balance, isn't it, between how many people you have, because you don't want to overspend on staff and then be in trouble.
Yeah, just to come in, obviously, I think the rural roads issue is well played out, we don't need to return to that. Just on civil parking enforcement, I think there's a lot of changes coming in terms with chapter six devolution to local authorities slowly coming in, which means we'll start to be able to enforce things like yellow boxes, pavement obstruction. There are going to be some challenges about how we do that. We'd obviously, well, it depends who you speak to, some people would like to see more traffic enforcement officers, some would like to see less. It's about deploying them into the right location, and I have to say, just as a side note, it's a really challenging area to hire people for. I've been out, been out with them a couple of times and done it, and faced nothing but barrel, barrels of abuse. So it's a hard job to recruit people for, and they do a very important job, just inevitably you almost need them where you don't want them at times, and that's a challenge. And I think we're starting to see particularly, like, for example, you know, the east coast in the summer, it's very challenging, I know we've got problems around the car parks as well, but I think if we get involved, does the police do less and we have to do more? Things like, you know, pavement parking is going to be a massive issue, and it's a tool we have at our disposal.
Okay, recommendations there on page 143, so the first one is that we note the carry forwards, which each department will deal with their own way, and obviously the rest of our recommendations, well, there's a recommend to the county council, the use of the remaining under spend, and then we note the other things. So this, item two, of course, is a recommendation to the full council, and no doubt we'll, don't want to, there will be a debate, I'm sure, and I'm sure there'll be alternative proposals, but that's probably the best place to part that. So do you agree with those recommendations then, please? Agreed? Thank you very much. Right, moving on then to the final paper, which is Corporate Plan Success Framework, quarter four. Is it straight to you, Caroline, or who's?
Yep, oh, thank you. Yeah, page 23, 231 even, sorry. 231 in your pack is the start of the report, which outlines the performance at quarter four for our corporate plan. Overall progress against the corporate plan priorities is progressively, predominantly as planned. You recall, we have two ways that we report performance within the framework, one is around activities, so those key things that we are delivering to underpin the delivery of the plan, and KPIs, the key performance indicators, so those things we specifically measure and set ambitions or targets for. So of the 39 activities that we can report within the quarter four report, 34, or 87% of progressing as planned, there are four activities where a milestone within that activity, so not necessarily the overall activity, but an element of the activity, has been amber-rag rated, so that means it's slightly behind where we anticipated it to be. The first one of those is A35, which was around focusing on the implementation of our digital blueprint and customer strategy, oh, sorry, apologies, A28, within Create Thriving Environments, sorry, which is about stimulating economic growth through the development of business premises, and this specifically related to the delivery of a cluster hub building in the South Lincolnshire Food Enterprise Zone, which should have been completed in March 2022, but is now scheduled for handover as we speak in early July. Also in Create Thriving Environments, A34, which was around working with partners to enhance our community safety. Again, we anticipated work around our health check and looking at our structure to be completed by March, and this has been deferred or delayed until September 2022. However, the recommissioning of the new domestic abuse outreach service is continuing within predicted time scales. The third activity is within Provide Good Value Council Services, and this is around the focus on our implementation of our digital blueprint and customer service strategy, and this specifically relates to the Customer Strategy Action Plan. And whilst the plan is progressing, it's slightly outside of the original time scale And whilst the plan is progressing, it's slightly outside of the original time scale set. And the final one is around attracting talented people through our implementing, implementing our improved recruitment processes. Again, the milestone was specifically around reviewing and evaluating initiatives as part of the people's strategy. But we've actually focused our work around the attraction and retention framework in order to be able to stabilise and develop the workforce. There's one activity that we have rag rated as red, so it's not progressing as planned. And this is specifically around improvement in utility infrastructure in order to enhance growth through exploring and implementing plans to maximise the development of energy, water and sewage and digital infrastructure. And it specifically replaces, relates to a energy options analysis study that we anticipated to, to be undertaken. But due to no submissions for the, for that work, we've had to go directly to a supplier. And this has delayed the start of this work. A full list of all of the activities with all of their statuses is on page two hundred and twenty, two, two hundred and fifty one, I can't get my numbers out today, of your pack in appendix A. In terms of the key performance indicators, we are able to report nine measures in quarter four. And of those nine measures, eight of them are either exceeding their target or achieving their target. So given the last twelve months, you know, and the challenges we've had, to have eighty nine percent of our measures exceeding or, exceeding or achieving their target, I think is really positive. And those targets obviously weren't adjusted, with the exception of one in relation to any kind of Covid or other activity, and I'll come on to that in a moment. I do want to specifically point out performance indicator number five, which is around pupils achieving five or more GCSEs, sorry, grades five or above in English and maths for their GCSEs. Just wanted to point out, you are more than probably aware that obviously in summer twenty twenty one, young people's grades were teacher assessed. We do anticipate that we will see both locally and nationally a reduction in performance for this measure for, for this summer's cohort of young people sitting their exams due to them, sitting them for the first time in two years. I also wanted to point out PI thirty two, which you'll recall is the super fast broadband coverage. And whilst we reported in quarter three this was behind target, we have actually now seen a positive impact as a result of upgrades in the south of the county and also the using of the semiconductor shortages. The one measure that we have made an amendment to is the rate of children in care per ten thousand population. The target has been adjusted from forty six children per ten thousand population to fifty. This is allowed predominantly for the impact of the National Transfer Scheme. However, performance remains strong in this challenging area, where we compare well with other local authorities. We always so continue to seek, you know, early intervention and prevention as our key priority, along with effective exit planning from care. And finally, to mention, the percentage of people remaining home ninety one days after discharge from hospital again, again, remains very strong, which against a backdrop of this continuing pressure on our reablement service is a really positive outcome. The one measure where we're not achieving the ambition we have set is around those days lost to sickness absence. This is a rolling twelve-month measure, so does take into account obviously those peaks and troughs of, of absence. We do report one quarter behind as well, so there is a slight lag in this data. And we are currently reporting eight point oh one days per FTE. Again, we've seen an increase in cold and flu viruses, along with obviously a slight increase in Covid nineteen. And also the number of mental health related absences is higher than, than desirable levels. But we continue to support staff with a very robust mental health support offer. We also have some key performance indicators where we haven't got targets or ambitions set, as you'll remember. We have had a rag rating applied by the executive director. And we specifically wanted to, and so we call them contextual measures. And we specifically wanted to identify those that have performed well, which is PI six, which is about the ratio of business births to deaths. Again, in the calendar year twenty twenty two, there have been one point four business starts for every business cessation, which after a long period of instability and high volatility is, is a really positive outcome. We continue to see high levels of visitors to our heritage attractions above the national level. We have a full event of summer, for summer as well. And so we can expect to see these numbers continue to rise. Unemployment has seen a nineteen percent reduction between September and December twenty twenty one in, in Lincolnshire, which is significantly lower than the national rate. There is an amendment to the narrative in the paper where, around the measure around unemployment for those with a disability, it's actually nine percent, which is above the national average of seven point five percent and not as stated below. However, I would like to point out, these numbers are based on a very small sample size and therefore should be treated with, with an element of caution. We continue to see high levels of waste being recycled and converted to energy. And we also, whilst we've seen some fluctuation in our levels of staff voluntarily leaving the council, this is considered within a healthy range of turnover. But we are obviously still continuing to experience some challenges around specific areas of the workforce, such as children's social care, legal services and IMT. However, within the people's strategy, as previously mentioned, there are ongoing strategies to mitigate some of this. And then finally, the key performance indicators, indicator that we've rag rated as red is around our complaints. And it's actually around the number of contacts that we are receiving. So again, we're continuing to see this increase. But we're also seeing a decrease in the cases being resolved at early resolution, predominantly due to increase in workload and the volume of complaints. Additional capacity has been brought into the team to address this. And we are continuing to work with the services to remind them around prioritisation of early resolution. Again, all of the activities and key performance indicators can be found on the council's website. Page two hundred and sixty six, appendix B, details the success framework we're going to use for twenty twenty two, twenty three. So those, those key performance indicators and activities that we will report to you. And I just confirm that all targets laid out in that paper have all now been agreed with, by the lead member for the specific portfolio area. I'll now hand over for any questions.
Councillor Parker, thank you. scrutiny comments?
There, there are nine features, but I can be brief about them. The, the first, the first one, when we were looking at the Corporate Plan Success Framework, the first one related to the ambition, enable everyone to enjoy life to the full. And I think it's fair to say that, that there was a view taken that we would ask yourself as leader of the council to be able to clarify or rethink how we could actually establish some sort of measurement of how that, that ambition is to be achieved. The second point relates to days lost to sickness absence. An increase in mental health illness amongst council staff, which of course gave us concern. A range of measures have been put in place. And we're looking forward to seeing what the next quarter's returns show in relation to that action. Waste and recycling figures for household waste indicate that recycling rates were falling, which was obviously a concern, and it's a reflection of changing habits during the pandemic. I think it's also good to point out the rollout of the separate paper and card collections in three district areas was bringing benefits in terms of an upturn in recycling rates and also in the improved quality of, of the waste. We wondered when the other four districts may be following suit. There was issue, issues raised about what's called the advocate for investment in our transport and energy infrastructure, digital connectivity in schools, championing active sustainability. Now, that's, if that's an advocate, that's a job title and a half, isn't it? The, the point being that we, it was reported to us that trying to find a supplier to deliver this work, that the ambition is, is good, but we can't find anybody because it seems to reflect the challenge that exists in the wider marketplace. The next, next point I want to make relates to the percentage of pupils in outstanding or good schools. We noted that sixteen point six percent of pupils were not in outstanding or good schools. It's fair to say that we recognise that part of the reason, because councillor Bradwell was at, at the meeting and, and, and supported it, is that there are some, for example, the Lincoln Anglican Trust, which is run by the Church of England. And for example, also, the Lincoln Academy Trust had just been judged inadequate and a new sponsor was being sought. So we, we wanted to bring that to the attention of the executive. And finally, the percentage of schools that are judged good or outstanding, Lincolnshire's, these figures were not as, as good as the national average. And it was explained that Lincolnshire's figures were skewed by the large number of small rural primary schools, which did cause some concern in the sense, not only because of the, we acknowledged the fact that they were getting less funding for pupil. And there was also the issue of the selective education in, in Lincolnshire. But how, how can we do anything to support those large number of small rural primary schools to enable all children to get the benefit of a good education? Those are the points that we noted.
Thank you very much for that. Questions, comments, please? There's quite a substantive report there. I think most of the issues were sort of raised, you were at the meeting, weren't you? Most of them were satisfactorily answered, weren't they? I mean, I was a bit, a little bit amused by the first one, that in terms of, to me, it, it, it's about equality of opportunity as opposed to equality of outcome. And everybody should be given the support. So I think that's probably something best taken offline. So I'm a little bit trying to understand what, what that's about. But so, I mean, I think my view is the contacts that enjoy life to the full within their circumstances. If you're a millionaire, what you decide, what, what your definition of living life to the full is probably different if you are unemployed and a single parent family. So I think there's an issue about how, I mean, my, my view is everybody should be helped according to their circumstances. But you've got to accept that different, different people have different, different places where they start from, so to speak. I don't think, I mean, the waste and recycling, obviously that, you know, it doesn't really take into account the stuff that's recycled in the incinerator and the energy waste plant, does it? To me, that's recycling as well. We still, I don't think the amount going to landfill is increased, does it? We don't send, still do send hardly anything to landfill, do we?
I think, chairman, it's still under, I think it's three, three point something percent.
See, the government, we'll see what, as it writes, says, we'll see what, how this environment act plays out. And I think there are concerns, both with collection and, and disposal, certainly in rural areas, what exactly the government will end up doing. So I don't think it's quite realised. They keep saying they'll pay for it all, but the cost will be substantial if everything is carried on to the letter. So the rest of it, I think, is, has been addressed as far as I can see. So any comments, questions then, please? No? Well, thank you for the report then. And the recommendations there on page two hundred and thirty one, that we note the report. And obviously, there's the new success framework, appendix three, for next, for this financial year, that we agree that as well. Is that agreed? All in favour? Very good. Thank you. So thank you for attendance and see you in two months. Thank you.